Good evening. Welcome to the virtual Meet the Candidates Town Hall. My name is Danielle Little, President of the Warner Robins Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. With over 300,000 initiated members, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a nonprofit and nonpartisan public service organization. We have over 1,000 chapters who establish local and national programs throughout the world. Our National President and Chief Executive Officer is Beverly Evan Smith. The Warner Robins Alumni Chapter has over 160 members who implement programs in Houston, Lakely, and Pulaski Counties. We implement projects focused on our sorority's five-point programmatic thrusts: economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Tonight's forum was organized by our Political Awareness and Involvement Committee. We appreciate each of our guests for participating in tonight's forum, and we look forward to learning more about each of their platforms. Now, I will turn it over to 13 WMAZ News Anchor Erin Rogers, who will brief us on tonight's event. Thank you and enjoy the program.
Good President Little. Good evening, everybody. I am Erin Rogers, the morning and noon anchor at 13 WMAZ. Staying up a little past my bedtime to be here with you this evening, but I am so happy to be here as a member of this dynamic, the best sorority ever, if I say so biasedly. I am very committed to political awareness and involvement. Of course, we all know voting is so important, and this election season, 13 WMAZ has a voting access team that I'm proud to be a part of. So we're also committed to making sure you have all the information you need before you head to the polls. So excited that the Warner Robins Alumni Chapter is doing this forum so that you are armed with even more information before heading out there. So I want to thank you all for caring enough to spend your time with us this evening, and also for the candidates for taking time out so that we can get to know you a little bit better before we make that informed decision. So I also want to introduce my other moderators who will be leading us through tonight. I think I've shared enough about myself. Now we'll go to Ms. Shelley Holmes. She is a member, a former president of the Warner Robins Alumni Chapter. As an educator, she holds degrees in English and Educational Leadership, and she is currently Assistant Principal for Instruction at Warner Robins High School. Thank you for being with us, Ms. George Holmes.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.
All right, and then now I would like to introduce Mr. Louis Lutkowski. He has a bachelor's degree in political science at Duke University and is a member of the Georgia Bar. He currently teaches AP United States Government at Warner Robins High School as well. So we have some wonderful people here alongside me. And Ms. Noah Salski, I know you know a lot about government, so you will be great to lead us through some of these discussions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm looking forward to it.
All right, so before we all kick this off, this is how this is going to go. We will have three rounds of questions. In the first round, you will get to meet each of the candidates running for their various offices. They will each be given three minutes to share information about themselves, their platform, and the vision that they have for that position. And we are going to get right to it. We are going to start off with the candidate for Superior Court Clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I appreciate the introduction. We are now going to hear from the candidates for the Superior Court Clerk of Houston County. Thank you again for joining us, Ms. Anderson. So Ms. Angela Anderson is here with us tonight. We invited the incumbent Superior Court Clerk, Ms. Carolyn Sullivan, to join us, but she unfortunately had a previous engagement. So within our three-minute timeframe, if you would please take some time, Ms. Anderson, to share us a little bit about yourself, your platform, and your vision as the Superior Court Clerk of Houston County.
Hello. I want to first thank the wonderful ladies of Delta Sigma Theta for having me here. My name is Angela Anderson, and I am your candidate for Superior Court Clerk. I was born and raised here in Houston County, and I attended Northside High School. I also completed the paralegal course at Central Georgia Tech. I'm the mother of two daughters. And I also am a member for the past three years on the Family Promise Board. And Family Promise is a nonprofit organization that assists homeless families. I have 22 years' experience in the Houston County court system. I was originally a victim advocate assisting victims of crime in juvenile, state, and superior courts. I was a legal assistant in the drug unit for the Houston DA's office, and currently I am a judicial assistant for a Superior Court judge. My platform as candidate is, the three things I want to focus on is customer service, technology, and accessibility. I feel like customer service is something that every office, not just public offices, every office should have when customers enter their building.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And we'll be back to have some questions for you after we hear from the candidates for the other offices and their introductions.
Thank you, Louis. We will start now with introducing you to the candidates for District Attorney for Houston County. Thank you both for joining us. Within a three-minute limit, we will have each of them share more information about themselves, their platform, and their vision for District Attorney. And we will start with the incumbent, go in alphabetical order, Mr. George Hartwig.
Well, good evening, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be here with you tonight, and thank you for hosting this event. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as a District Attorney of Houston County for the last 10 years. I've been in the District Attorney's Office for a total of 19 years. Prior to that, I was in private practice as an attorney, civil practice in Macon for about 10 years. And prior to that, back in the 70s and 80s, I was in law enforcement as a police officer in the state of Florida. I am the incumbent District Attorney in Houston County. I'm a Republican. I am a conservative. I am pro-law enforcement, pro-life. I'm a born-again Christian who is saved and believes in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am pro-gun, pro-law enforcement. I do believe that we have done a very good job here in Houston County, keeping crime under control, keeping crime in check. We've done an outstanding job in the last 10 years while I've been the District Attorney in keeping Houston County safe. I have made the emphasis and priority of my administration as your DA, the prosecution of serious violent crime, and we have done that very, very well. Since I've been the District Attorney, our office has obtained 53 life sentences. That's just for crimes committed in Houston County. 22 of those 53 life sentences are life without the possibility of parole. So that is, that's a pretty significant number for Houston County. We do a good job prosecuting the serious violent crime, and that should be our priority, and it will continue to be my priority when I'm reelected on November 3rd. We have a good office. We have a good staff. We work hard, and we're going to continue to serve the citizens of Houston County with honor, with dignity. We're going to work hard, and we're going to do everything we can to keep the citizens of Houston County safe.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. We will catch up with you in a bit with a few more questions. Now I'm going to bring in Ms. Erica Williams. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, your vision, and your platform?
Good evening, everyone. I am Erica Williams. I am the Chief Assistant District Attorney for the Houston County DA's Office, which means I am second-in-command in the office. I want to say thank you to the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Warner Robins Alumni Chapter, for having this program this evening. I am an 18-year employee of the Houston County District Attorney's Office. I am licensed to practice law actively in Georgia and inactively in the state of Ohio. I'm actually originally from Ohio. As far as my employment with the DA's Office, I began in 2002 under District Attorney Kelly Burke. I started in the juvenile division. Worked there long enough, I received my National Certification in Juvenile Prosecution, and eventually moved to the Superior Court. In 2011, I was appointed by District Attorney George Hartwig as Chief Assistant District Attorney, a position that I still hold today. As far as my platform, my platform is to bring change. Our office is in flux, and things need to change in order for them to get better. I believe that we need to work to reduce the outstanding case backlog that we have. I believe we need to increase our youth diversion programs. I believe we need to hold record restriction programs for the community. And I believe that we can do a better job of keeping our community safe. And so that is why I am running. Obviously, I'm running against my boss. We do have a difference in opinion on how well the office is running, but we can talk about that, I guess, a little bit more later. But I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit about my platform and a little bit about me. I am a wife. I am the mother of two. I'm a dog mom of one. My children attend schools here in Houston County, and I am a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, as well as Jack and Jill of America, the Macon Chapter. I'm a former president of the Houston County Bar Association, a member of the National District Attorney's Association, the National Black Prosecutors Association, and a member of the Georgia Bar. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now go on to meet the candidates for State Representative, District 147, and we will catch up with the two of you in just a bit.
Now we will hear from the candidates for State Representative, District 147. Thank you again for joining us this evening. With the three-minute time limit, can you share brief information about yourself, your platform, and vision for your position? We will start with Mr. Stephen Boyer. Incoming Keith Clark was invited to attend, but he had a previous engagement.
Mr. Boyer. Hi. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. My name is Stephen Boyer. I'm the Democratic candidate for State House District 147, which covers pretty much north Houston County, north side of Warner Robins, Centerville, and a little bit of Byron, about 55,000 people. So a little bit about me. I'm a father of two great kids. I have a 14-year-old son and an 11-year-old daughter. My education is in accounting. I have a bachelor's and master's of accounting from Georgia College and State University. I'm a military veteran. I have served in both the United States Navy and the US Air Force Reserves. My professional experience with accounting is I've done tax returns and bookkeeping for individuals, small businesses, corporations, partnerships. And I've also worked to help as a project controller for North of government, a national defense contractor here in Warner Robins, and helped manage budgets worth of hundreds of millions of dollars. So that's a little bit about my professional life up till about 2016. And since then, I've run a series of personal finance retreats throughout the country. So that is a passion of mine, people taking control of their lives through responsible money management. As far as my platform, basically, we have a couple of big things coming here in the future, in the next year. As most of you know, we have the census this year, and the year after the census is whenever districts are redrawn. As a Democrat, we are currently the minority in the State House. We have 75 seats, and we need 91 to get a majority. So our goal is to hold what we have, flip those 16 seats, get a majority of the House, and have a say in how these districts are redrawn so that Democrats are not continued to be silenced for the next six, eight, 10 years in the state government. Another focus that Democrats and I would like to work on, as soon as we possibly can, is to expand healthcare to more and more Georgians. I'll get to that later, probably in a future question. And I'd like to reprioritize public education. I'm not sure of the time here, but if you ask someone about me, if you were to ask someone about me as a person, I would hope that they would say I'm honest, I have integrity, I'm generous, I live a life of service, I'm responsible, I'm patriotic, hopefully humble. And these are the qualities that I will take into representing District 147 at the state level.
Thank you very much. We'll talk a little bit more later on this evening.
And just let that round one is done. We are moving on to round two. So in this round, each candidate will be given two minutes to answer questions. They will be different based on the position that the candidate is running for. So without further ado, we will head on back to the candidate for Superior Court Clerk.
All right, Ms. Anderson, you have a two-minute time limit on this question. So our question for you is, please share what type of processes you would use to improve the efficiency in the clerk's office?
What I would use would be considered under technology, but I think technology can make lots of things more efficient. I'd like to implement a dedicated website so that the citizens know more about what the clerk's office offers. I would also like to make the forums accessible on the website. At this current time, the forums are labeled "pro se," self-help forums. Well, a lot of people don't know what "pro se" means, and "pro se" means you basically are representing yourself. You do not have an attorney assisting you in the courtroom. And so I would also like to make those forums online in a PDF fillable format, and that will allow the people to save their forms at home. We do have an e-file system for our domestic and civil cases. So if the forums are on their computer, they can easily upload it. We do offer two computers at the clerk's office, or they do. And you could also come down to the clerk's office. But I feel like in a PDF fillable format, the forums are more legible for the clerk's office, the judges, and the law clerks, because the law clerks review the cases. I also think we should implement a social media page. Everybody uses social media now. We all know that. And I think that we could use that social media page to let everybody keep up with what's happening in the clerk's office. For instance, there was an employee who tested positive for COVID-19, and the clerk's office was closed. The current clerk used her personal page to let everyone know that it was closed. Well, everyone doesn't have access to her personal page, so that's something I would also like to implement. I'd also like to implement a credit card system. Currently, the courthouse does have an ATM, but of course, you have to get a minimum of $20 out plus ATM fees. Prior to...
I'm sorry, Fred. That's done.
But thank you, Ms. Anderson. Lots of good ideas there. So your second question for the evening, or for this round, is going to be, interpersonal skills such as teamwork, leadership, and dependability are so important to this position. Again, in two minutes, please share what interpersonal skills you are going to bring to this position.
I think I could bring teamwork to this position. Of course, to operate in any office, you would need teamwork. As the old saying goes, there's no "I" in teamwork. Teamwork makes the dream work. And I believe with a dedicated staff that we can make the clerk's office, if not the best in the middle Georgia area in the state. And it would take that dedicated team to make that happen. Conflict resolution is something I also could bring to the office. I consider myself having a calm voice, and you have to keep in mind, when people enter the office, sometimes they're going through stressful times. And so I think you would need to assess the situation and listen. It takes a lot of listening to them to figure out what they're trying to do. I don't believe that there should ever be a time when you curse at customers who enter that office. So I think it also takes empathy to work in any public office.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I appreciate your answers, and we will be back for more questions in round three after we hear from the other candidates.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Now we will move on to round two for the District Attorney candidates. They will each have two minutes to answer one question each. We all know that safety has been a big concern, especially in the wake of George Floyd and the aftermath, all of the racial tension that we have seen across the country, the understanding we've been trying to grasp. We have heard the words "law and order" often. That means different things to different people, starting with you, incumbent George Hartwig. What does "law and order" mean to you?
Well, law and order is just that. We have to have law and order on our streets. We have to have accountability. We have to prosecute criminals that break the law. I do believe in the right to free speech and a right to peaceful protest, but I absolutely believe that those who go out and damage property, that injure other people, injure people that are destroying cities across this country should be prosecuted. They should be held accountable for their actions. Police need to be held accountable. Since I've been the District Attorney, I have prosecuted police officers, something that my opponent has not done. I have taken cases involving police officers in front of a grand jury to hold police accountable for their actions. So I have the experience, both as a civil attorney and as a prosecutor, in holding people accountable. I have done that as a District Attorney and have a track record of doing that. I will continue to do that. We have a safe county here in Houston County. Houston County averages seven or eight murders a year. The county to the north of us, Bibb County, is going to be somewhere in the 50 to 60 range this year for murders. That is a stark difference. So this county, we do a great job holding offenders accountable, seeing the people who break the law are prosecuted, and we will continue to do that when I'm reelected in November.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Mrs. Williams, same question to you. What does "law and order" mean to you?
Well, law and order to me means following the law and applying justice. The job of the prosecutor is to look at a case and decide whether or not it merits prosecution. There are other jobs that the DA's Office does, but we do have to make sure that we are following the law, and we want to make sure that we are working closely with our local law enforcement agencies. It is my opinion that right now, the District Attorney's Office is not... It is my opinion that right now, the district attorney's office is not working well with local law enforcement agencies. They are not happy with the work that is being done at the DA's office. They're not happy with the communication that goes on between the district attorney and their particular agencies. So that is an issue. And the district attorney is correct that I have not personally handled a case in which a officer has been accused of a crime. But as the district attorney knows, he is the one that assigns the cases. So I cannot handle what I have not been assigned. I will say that in the past, there have been investigations presented by the district attorney that did not result in indictments. And there have also been cases involving officers' use of force that was reduced to a misdemeanor. So he's talking about my experience on the issue of law and order and working on those kind of cases. And I just want to make sure you understand that he's the one that assigns the cases. So I'm certainly capable and ready to handle those types of cases, should they come up. But I think it's important to remember that the district attorney's office has to have a good relationship with law enforcement. They need to have a district attorney that they respect, that they can communicate, that they can reach when they need to. And I believe that I am the person for that. Thank you.
Thank you both for your answers. We will now catch back up with you guys for round three. But we will now move on to the candidate for State Representative 147 and Mrs. Holmes, who will be moderating that question. Thank you both.
Round two, Mr. Boyer. You talked earlier that you wanted to make some changes with healthcare. So tell us, in two minutes, where do you stand on healthcare, especially in light of the COVID-19 pandemic? Should we or should we not expand Medicaid?
Short answer, yes, we should expand Medicaid. You know, obviously, COVID-19 came this year and it brought to light a lot of issues that we have. One of the big issues we have is that our insurance tends to be tied to our employment or our employer. I mean, things happen, such as the COVID or other recessions. And we, through no fault of our own, lose our jobs. We also lose our health insurance. And so we do need to look at options for Georgians to maintain coverage that is not dependent on their jobs. So yes, absolutely, I am for Medicaid expansion. What... One of the reasons why I'm running is I kind of a broader approach or broader view is because I am not happy with the leadership of the state. You know, in my opinion, we take our leadership, our current leadership, takes pride in being the last to move forward. For example, with Medicaid expansion, this is something that we've had the option to do since the Affordable Care Act. And we haven't done it. And we are only one of 12 states that haven't. And they're all in the southeast. Almost all of them are in the southeast. So why is it that we are holding on to this? Why is it so bad that, if it's so bad, why are 48 other states, why have they already done that? So that's something that I feel is a symptom of our leadership. And we just need to start looking at what we believe is inevitable anyway. Stop holding on to the past ways. Look what the trends are. Let's get out in front of them and move Georgia in a different direction and move it forward.
Okay. Thank you. So your second question is that you mentioned you hope to get increased funding for K through 12 schools and for educators. What would you do to allocate for increased funding so that it's accessible to the schools and educators that could really benefit from it?
Yeah, so for people who are watching who don't know this, our state recently cut our public education funding by $1 billion, almost $1 billion. That's with a B, billion. Public education, one of the main things that government is responsible for, we just cut it by almost $1 billion. And the bad part is, is we have to make cuts, that's one thing. But we made cuts without looking at other ways to raise revenue to help reduce the amount of cuts that we had to make. So to me, again, current leadership is making decisions to basically reduce the effectiveness of the purpose that they exist as a government, at the expense of parents and teachers who have to pick up the slack and at the benefit of some industries and some high-income individuals who have benefited disproportionately from the tax breaks that they've implemented. So on one hand, you're letting people who don't need the tax breaks get the tax breaks, and you're taking it from people who need public education. So what I would do is, I don't know who would do that in their right mind. So what I would do is, I could tell you, I would never do that. I would never basically not do my job and provide what government is supposed to provide without looking at other ways to reduce the negative impact or impact on education. Public education is a cornerstone of, you know, how we get, how we develop our people. And so when we start starving our public education system so that bigger corporations and high-income earners can squeeze just a little bit more money out of the system, that's not something that I'll stand for moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now back to Erin.
Yes, my apologies. I shorted my candidates on one question. I blame it on being up since 2:00 AM. So thank you again for coming back in. Second quick question, starting with you, Mr. Hartwig. How will you handle case backlog?
Well, we have a plan in place to handle the backlog. Obviously, our backlog has really increased since the COVID pandemic hit in March. We have not had a grand jury meeting, have not had a trial since mid-March. So we have right now several hundred cases that are ready to be indicted, that are ready to go and ready to be presented to grand jury. So what I have done is, I am filing an application with the Superior Court, Chief Superior Court Judge, pursuant to a Georgia law that allows me to request for a concurrent second grand jury to be selected. So the late October, we will be selecting actually two grand juries. And we will then start running two simultaneous grand juries. So we will have twice the number of grand jury days available to present cases. We will, right now, the way we work is that with one grand jury in place, which is the way it's been for 19 years that I've been there, grand jury meets every two weeks, every other Tuesday. We are going to have these two grand juries. They are going to alternate. So from late next month until at least the end of the year, we are going to have a grand jury meeting every week. They will alternate. So Grand Jury A will meet one week, Grand Jury B will meet the next week, and then the week after, it'll go back to Grand Jury A. So it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of coordination. But we will have grand jury meeting every single week. That is going to allow us between late October, when we select those two grand juries, until the end of the year, to have about 10 days of grand jury presentation. And I'm hoping that is going to allow us to get, for the most part, caught up on the backlog that we've incurred because of COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Same question to you, Ms. Williams. In two minutes, can you tell us how you plan to address case backlog in the Houston County District Attorney's Office?
Certainly. I would first acknowledge that there was a backlog that existed before COVID. Part of that problem is that the current administration does not have staff allocated in a way that is moving cases. Under my administration, we would be looking at cases to determine which ones could be handled without having a trial. We would need to increase the use of pretrial diversions and really take a hard look at some of the cases that we have pending. Under our court system, under the American justice system, everyone who is charged with a crime is entitled to a trial by jury of their peers. It is not feasible to do that for everyone. So let's look at some of these older cases and figure out which ones are suitable for either a special pretrial diversion or dismissal. We just might have to, for the sake of judicial economy. And part of the problem is that contributes to the backlog is the way that the district attorney moves around and shuffles prosecutors without any notice. When you move a prosecutor around or you take them from their caseload, the next prosecutor that comes behind is going to have to play catch-up because they don't know everything that the previous prosecutor did. So we definitely don't want that to happen, and that has happened multiple times under Mr. Hartwig's jurisdiction. In January, I was suddenly moved from my case, from the case file that I had. So then the attorney that came in after me had to pick up from where I was. That's on top of COVID. But we also have to look and understand, why are some of these cases pending? Do we have a district attorney that only wants to show up at the bond hearing? Only wants to be there when the cameras are rolling and then not following through? We have cases right now that involve, that the district attorney is handling that have not been moved prior to COVID. So under my administration, we will reduce the backlog by looking at some of these cases and figuring out which ones are the best use of our limited trial time, offering pretrial diversion programs when we are able to. And when we're not, then we'll have to find some other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you both for bearing with me. I'm sorry I shorted you both on that question. Now we will move in to round three of questions. And this will be a chance for everyone who is joining in and previously submitted questions to be asked from our live audience. And I will have both of my moderators come back and join me on screen and all of the candidates as well. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. And the moderators will go in order, asking a question. So we will start with you, Mr. Lewis.
Ms. Anderson, you talked somewhat about changes to technology. I wanted to give you a chance to discuss if you had any other technological advancements that you think could help in the clerk's office. And also, in addition to that, what do you think you would be able to do to secure the funding, the financing, for these upgrades?
Well, some other things that I would like to do as far as technology. Right now, Houston County is in the process of implementing a new case management system. I have been a part of that process from the beginning and I continue on that process as we make sure everything is flowing right through that process. And I would, which helps me be able to take that over as the new Superior Court clerk. I didn't catch the second part. You faded out on my end.
Yes, ma'am. It asked about the possibility of how you would secure the funding and the financing to make these technological upgrades.
Well, there is a budget for Houston County, for the clerk's office. And I am sure that the commissioners would be willing to make sure all of these changes are implemented. Houston County considers itself to be the most progressive county in the state of Georgia. So why not have a clerk's office that also is just as progressive?
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Bear with us. We are trying to get some of the live audience questions and the ones that were previously submitted so that we hear from the people who will be voting for the candidates and what they want to hear. Do we have any of those questions yet? Okay. Monica Miller has a question for the DA candidate. We talked about the backlog, but she wants to know, why has it taken so long to address those issues? Either candidate.
Sure. I'll be glad to address that. I would like to address something that my opponent just said a couple of minutes ago, though, about me not going to court and showing up for bond hearings and not going to court and moving cases. That's just simply not true. We've been in the DA's office, I've been in the DA's office about a year longer than her. I have tried way more cases than my opponent has. I pled a case out last Thursday morning, armed robbery and kidnapping, sent somebody to prison. The Bonnie and Clyde case from Perry, where they kidnapped the clerk, robbing a convenience. I tried cases. I've tried about 10 murder cases since I've been the DA. I don't believe my opponent's tried a single murder case. So, you know, for her to imply or insinuate that I don't try cases is just absurd. The backlog, I will gladly address. The cases that get selected for trial do not get selected by the district attorney's office. They get selected by the Superior Court judges. Those cases are prioritized. So speedy trial demand cases get tried first. Folks that are still incarcerated without bond in our jail awaiting trial get tried in the next priority and so on and so forth. So the vast majority of the cases we handle, people are out of jail on bond. And those cases are the lowest priority cases. So we don't get to pick and choose and select and say, here's a case that's two or three years old. We want to try this case next month. That's not up to us. That's not our call. In fact, we have specifically been told by the judges, we can't say which cases go on the trial counter. The judges do. And so there was a letter written to the Houston Home Journal by a local doctor back during the primary that said that I didn't care about a major theft case from her medical practice. That case is about three years old. We have done everything in our office to prosecute that case. It's been indicted. It's been arraigned. We've done everything we can do to prosecute that case, but it has not been put on a trial calendar yet. That case actually was being handled by one of my opponent's supporters, who used to be an ADA in our office. But I don't control when that case gets called for trial.
Thank you, though. Mrs. Williams, do you want to respond to the why is there a backlog or wait for another question?
Fine. I can respond to that. You cannot address what you refuse to acknowledge. During the primary, he said there wasn't a backlog. So I don't know what to tell you. He mentioned that I have not tried a murder case. George, we tried a murder case together. And you know, as your chief assistant, you decide the cases that get tried. You know I have tried multiple vehicular homicide cases. I have tried sexual assault cases, child molestation, rapes, armed robberies. I have extensive trial experience, including bench trials that were handled in juvenile court. What Mr. Hartwig is not answering when you're asking the question is, you have to acknowledge that the district attorney still has a role in reducing that backlog. We get these trial calendars with 100-plus defendants on them. Not every case is ready to go. But if we are not meeting with the ADAs to know what cases are ready or what issues come up, then we end up wasting trial weeks when we think a case is ready to go and it falls apart at the last minute. Prior administrations met with their assistant district attorneys weekly to talk about the case files. Do we need to meet weekly? Maybe not. But what about biweekly? When was the last time there was an office-wide attorney/ADA meeting to discuss the trial calendars? I know when I was still in the Superior Court office prior to January, I was holding those meetings. Mr. Hartwig was not present. So under my administration, the district attorney will have those meetings so we can look at the cases and see which ones are ready to go. So that when we get to the trial calendar, we're not wasting taxpayer dollars by having jurors paid to be there that cannot hear cases, angering the judges because we are not ready to go, and wasting time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes, your question.
Thank you. My question left, so I'll come to another question that was sent in previously. For our DA candidates, what type of cases would you refer to for pretrial diversion and why? And I'm going to... And I'm going to let Mr. Hartwig go first on that question.
Well, we currently have in Superior Court, in the DA's office, there is a pretrial diversion program that we utilize. We utilize that on a regular basis. And the cases that typically go into that are simple drug possession cases, theft cases, a variety of cases that are nonviolent type cases, entering autos, bad checks. Cases where the offender does not have a bad record. It's a crime where no one has been injured and hurt. The more minor type of felonies, those cases are on a regular basis put into a pretrial diversion program. So we have then in place the typical pretrial diversion program that we do. Typically is a 12-month program. Sometimes we will do 24 months. In occasional cases, sometimes we'll go more than 24 months, but typically it's 12 or 24 months. The pretrial diversion program has a number of different components to it, including working toward and obtaining a GED, maintaining employment, all kinds of different conditions that will put on somebody who's in that pretrial diversion program. In addition to that pretrial diversion program, we also have an accountability court. It is a mental health accountability court program. It's an 18-month program that we have that we put offenders into that have some type of a mental health issue. A lot of those offenders, probably the majority, also have some type of a drug abuse component. And again, a lot of times those are drug offenders. Those are the property crime offenders, nonviolent offenders that get put into that mental health accountability court program. So we have a number of different programs. We utilize those on a regular basis. And we're going to continue to use those when I'm reelected.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Great question, Ms. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Hartwig is correct about the use of our pretrial diversion programs. I would like to see us expand those programs and really tailor them towards some other crimes. One crime we see a lot of that I don't think necessarily requires trial time are people that have been arrested for the felony offense of driving while license suspended. Under Georgia law, after you've had a certain amount of driving while license suspended cases, it automatically becomes a felony. I feel as if, and I have done so in the past, that it is completely just to offer that defendant an opportunity to resolve that type of case without a felony conviction that will strip him temporarily of his right to, his right to vote, as well as his right to possess firearms lawfully. So what I have done, what I would like to see expanded upon is to give those defendants an opportunity to, as a condition of their pretrial diversion, to get their license back. Because understanding how the system works, that even reducing a driving suspended license from a felony to a misdemeanor is going to result in another suspension of that person's driver's license. And so they kind of get on a cycle that they can never get off of. And because the backlog is so great, I've had multiple instances where a defendant has gotten their license back by the time the case comes to trial. And for those that don't know, it can cost upwards of $1,000 to reestablish a suspended driver's license. So let's help these people get off that cycle by offering them a structured pretrial diversion for that type of case because it is usually a nonviolent offense. Their people's licenses are usually suspended for nonviolent reasons. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, Ms. Anderson, we've got a question for you from the audience from Lisa Lowe. She wants to know, how important is the Superior Court Clerk's relationship with fellow clerks, attorneys, and judges? Did we lose her? Sorry, can you hear us?
Yes, I believe that the relationship with the judges and the attorneys should be one of the utmost professionalism. In order, the clerk's office is the gateway to Superior Court. They maintain the records for the judges. They also maintain the records so that when attorneys have their case present in court, the records need to be accurate. So I think that the relationship between all the parties should be one of professionalism.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we are going to skip over me for one question and go to Ms. Kelly. She has a question for Mr. Boyer.
Okay, Mr. Boyer, what are your plans to improve the economy and continue to bring businesses into Houston County?
Well, that's a tough question. So the economy, as my opponent put out there, and it's true, is Georgia has been has been labeled, titled, given the title of the best place to run a business seven years in a row now. But I will say, that's great for business owners, but we're not all business owners. So many of us, much more of us are workers. And by any list you can look up, we are near the bottom for workers. You know, 48th, we're near the bottom. So what I would like to do is, you know, we need to make, to boost the economy, we have to have people who want to come here to work. You know, we need to be competitive with other states to attract talent. And to keep the talent that we have homegrown here. So I would say let's start working on looking out for the worker. Not at the expense of businesses, but we need to make sure that the workers are taken care of. And as we have better workers, or as we can keep our workers and increase the talent pool and then the results will be even better for the businesses. And so that will grow the businesses here in Georgia. Even more, even more so. So I would say start looking out for the workers more, workers' rights. That's not necessarily anti-business. So it's not one or the other. It could be both. And absolutely should be both. And, you know, that's one focus, one area that I would focus on as far as making Georgia's economy even stronger.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Our next question from our Facebook audience is from Mr. Casey Young. He has a question for the DA candidate. When you have an individual within the DA's office that freely makes racially charged comments to other office personnel and makes other comments that do not support healthy diversity inclusion, what would you do to address that issue? What do you think it says about the culture of the office to allow said individual to be comfortable enough to make such comments?
Well, I can say that certainly to make comments of that nature would be inappropriate. And were that to occur, I would certainly, you know, have the person in the office and have a talk with them about that. And we would address that situation.
Would you enact any punishment for that type of behavior? Is that something you would work into your DA office?
I didn't hear your whole question. You cut out on me there.
I apologize. I said, would you enact any punishment for that behavior? Is that something that you would work into your DA office culture?
I mean, it would depend on exactly what, you know, what was said and how it was said and in the context of it. It would depend on the actual factual situation. It could be anything from being brought in the office and being talked to and counseled about it to being terminated. It would just depend on the specifics.
And Mrs. Williams, if you were to hold that office, how would you address such instances?
Well, first of all, let me just say that having been an employee in the office for a long time, I know of particular instances where that has happened. And I'm sorry that that has happened. I would hope that we've all learned from those situations. I feel like employees at the DA's office should be protected and supported. It should be a welcoming environment. No matter your race, decree, orientation, religious status, whatever, it should be open. And if an employee comes to you and tells you that they're having a problem, then it should be addressed. But that goes into differences in how our administration will be. As I mentioned, as I've mentioned prior, we, Mr. Hartwig and I, do not see eye to eye about the management of the office. And currently, the way the office is run, the employees have nowhere to go if they need to seek redress. They do not. There have been multiple employees that have gone to the personnel department because they feel like they have been mistreated by the staff. There's record of it. And they don't know what to do. They have turned to the personnel department. They've been told that there's nothing that can be done because Mr. Hartwig is an elected official. The county commission is aware of it. They are not protecting their employees. And it just sets us up for problems. The district attorney does not acknowledge or admit that there's any problems internally with the way the office is being run. And that's problematic. You cannot, should not be engaging in relationships with your staff, period. It creates a hostile environment for the employees. Thank you.
Thank you both. Let's go with, I will have you take the next question.
Thank you. This is another state representative question, so for our state representative candidate. Given the chance to amend the Constitution without interference, what about it would you change? This is from Kimberly Dickerson in our audience.
Hi, Kimberly. Thank you very much. You know, I have not, I cannot answer that right now, but I'm happy to get to research and get with you directly and answer this question later or publicly on Facebook, whatever. That's fine. But you do bring up the fact that Georgia does have a constitution. A lot of people don't know. I mean, we have a constitution in the United States. Well, the state of Georgia also has a constitution. And again, for the people who don't know or may have not seen the ballot yet, we do have two proposed constitutional amendments. And one of those is to allow the General Assembly to to direct funds into, towards the specific intent that they were collecting. So right now, you can collect funds for a certain reason and the state doesn't necessarily have to spend it for that reason. So for people who are wondering, I am in favor of that change. So yes, I do believe that we should be able to direct funds and spend them only in the ways that they were intended to be spent when they were collected. The other proposed constitutional amendment that we're going to have on the ballot this year is is something I am also in favor of, in favor of. And basically it states, it gives, it waives a state and local sovereign immunity for violation of state laws, state and federal constitution. So basically, if a law is violated, someone, you know, you can hold, currently you cannot sue the state. And so this right here is basically removing that sovereignty. Just says, yes, you have more option to have legal recourse whenever you feel wrong. When you feel you are wrong or you are wrong by the state unlawfully.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we have another audience question or do we need to move on to our final round? Well, we have another audience question. All right. This one is from Lorena Del Rio, again, from candidate Boyer. What policies do you want to implement that would attract workers and not harm business owners, as you said in one of your previous questions?
All right. So whenever you say harm, Lorena, I don't consider a little bit more cost harm. I think it's a short-term expense for a long-term benefit. There are many stakeholders involved in the success of a company. That's the company, that's the customers, that's the employees, and that's the community in which that company works. So I don't define an investment in community, an investment in the worker harm. And I'm not saying that that's what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure that that I see, I don't see that necessarily as harm. You know, short-term expense for long-term profit, that's just a good investment. So something that we need to look at is providing levelable wages for employees. I personally feel like anyone who is willing to trade 40 hours of their life every week should be able to maintain at least a lower-middle-class quality of life. So that's something that we need to look at. More options for health insurance. It's a little bit cheaper, more affordable for workers. We need to we need to respect more and make it more of a culture change as far as how parents, fathers do, you know, how they can bond with their kids after being born. There shouldn't be a culture of guilt or wanting to starve your family outright and have strong bonds. So those are a few things. You know, just really, and I'm sure that there are plenty more, but really just kind of change, look at the culture. Everything cannot be all about the profit of a business. We're all here. We all share the same environment, the same city. And, you know, we're all connected and we're all linked. And it can't all be about just squeezing money out of every business endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. And Mrs. Holmes, I don't know if this will be our last audience question, but the next question is yours.
All right.
We get one.
Do we have any more questions?
There we go.
All right. So for our DA candidates, what can you do in your role as DA to diminish the incidences of gun violence outside of utilizing punitive measures within the judicial system? That was a long one. That's from Ms. Price.
Well, I'll go ahead and answer. For me, it's kind of a tough question because when you get the DA's office involved, you're already starting in the punitive measures. I would like to see us strengthen our juvenile courts, though. Right now, we don't have a lot of programming that is available locally for juveniles. And those things cost money. So one of the things that I would like to do is use some of our forfeiture funds to help create specific programs for our youth. Maybe to help them with conflict resolution skills. I'd like to go back to having our gang prevention task force that we had for many, many years that we don't have anymore. The numbers of shootings that are going on during the day in Houston County has gone up. So we definitely need to get some intervention programs going. And hopefully we can do that before they get into the adult system. There are, you know, there was a time where we had a lot more programs. COVID has kind of interrupted that. But even if we have to do it on Zoom, I would like to see some programs available for our youth.
I can tell you, I would be in favor and support gun safety programs for youth and young people, doing that within the schools, doing that in our communities. Although I don't know that that is going to do a lot to reduce the gun violence because the teenagers, the young people, the folks that are out there doing the gun violence, doing the drive-by shootings, you know, them learning gun safety is not going to be that much of a help. But I am in favor of that because, as I said in my opening remarks, I am very pro-gun. I am pro-Second Amendment. I am pro-gun ownership and pro-carry of firearms. I believe in a person's right to defend themselves. But I think when you talk about reducing gun violence, the only way to do that is with the punitive measures.
with the punitive measures. I think we need to make it very clear that if you commit violent crime in our community with a gun, that you are going to be prosecuted, you're going to be prosecuted aggressively, we are going to send you to prison, and we need to take a strong stance and aggressively and harshly prosecute people that commit gun violence. And that's the way you, you reduce it, is by, by getting tough on it, not by getting weaker.
Thank you.
And thank you all for answering those questions. Thank you for everyone watching at home for submitting those questions and keeping this conversation going. We are going to move on to our fourth and final round now, which will just be some final remarks from our candidates, some parting words as we say. And we will start with Lewis and Ms. Anderson with a Superior Court Clerk.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So we appreciate you being here tonight. You will have two minutes to give us your final remarks and your final comments about your position for Superior Court Clerk of Houston County.
Thank you. I would just like all the citizens to know that I am ready to make changes to that office. I am ready to lead that office. The current clerk is now discussing changes she wants to implement within the office, but after 40 years of little to no change, why now? Well, now, because she has an opponent. So I just, like I said, I would like you to know that I am, I am here, I'm ready to make those changes, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. You can reach me on Facebook at Anderson, Angela Anderson for Clerk, and you could also reach me at my website at www.angelaandersonforclerk.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson, and thank you again for being here with us tonight.
Thank you both, and we will now move on to the candidates for District Attorney. We will start with the incumbent, District Attorney George Hartwig. What are your final remarks or comments do you have for the good people of Houston County?
Well, again, I want to thank you for hosting this event and for having me on. It's, it has been a privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of Houston County for many, many years, and I am seeking another term in office and seeking reelection as your District Attorney and running on my very strong record as District Attorney. I have worked very, very hard to keep this community safe, and I believe that we have done so. We have one of the safest counties and safest communities in, in Georgia, and certainly in Middle Georgia. Are we crime-free? Are we without crime? No, we're not. But we are certainly a very, very safe community compared to communities around us. You know, I was at a gang meeting this morning in Milledgeville, where they talked about the tremendous gang problem they have in Milledgeville, which is smaller than one of Robbins. They had, they had all kinds of shootings in Milledgeville related to gangs. We don't have that type of a problem here in Houston County, and it's because of the stance we've taken, it's because of aggressive prosecution, it's because, you know, we have drawn that line in the sand and said we are going to target a serious violent crime in our community, and we're going to prosecute it hard, and that's what we have done, that's what I have done as the DA. And I'm running on that record. If the people want to keep this community safe, they want to continue to be secure in their homes and their businesses, and feel safe walking the streets of Houston County, then I'm the person that they need to elect and, and put back into office. You know, my opponent talks about more diversion programs and, and more record restriction. Well, frankly, I think we've got enough diversion programs in place, we've got enough record restriction programs in place. You don't combat crime by getting softer on crime and taking crime off of people's records. You, you keep crime low and attack crime by going after criminals and by prosecuting them and sending those serious violent criminals to prison. And that's what I've done, and that's what I'm going to continue to do, and I appreciate the votes and support.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Mrs. Williams, same question, final remarks and comments, it's not a question, but you do have two minutes for that.
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to let the county know where I stand on things. I want to just say that record restriction is the law in Georgia. It shouldn't be a secret. It has been expanded recently by a bipartisan law in Georgia, which means Republicans and Democrats have all agreed that record restriction is necessary. Because it is necessary and part of our laws, we should make it accessible to the community. The District Attorney's Office is one of the most powerful offices in the county. It is, it is, with that enormous power, I mean, not to go all Spider-Man on everyone, but with, with great power comes great responsibility, and right now, Mr. Hartwig is not exercising that power appropriately. He is not. He is treating this office as if it is his personal office. He is not acting as if he is in, in the best interest of the citizens of Houston County. We have had a tremendous amount of turnover, a loss of several attorneys with multiple years of trial experience, including a specialized, specially-trained child abuse prosecutor. We do not have a specially-trained child abuse prosecutor, I mean, other than myself, but I don't have those cases right now. We don't have a specially-trained child abuse prosecutor, and it's because Mr. Hartwig and the way that he is treating the people in his office are leaving. People are tired of being abused, they are tired of being treated with pettiness, and they have no, no, nowhere to go. So as I said in my campaign announcement, the only way to change the atmosphere in elected official's office is to change the elected official, and I am asking for your support, whether you be Democrat or Republican, to look at me, look at my history with the office, my service to the community, my over 18 years of handling cases, both serious violent crimes, and also offering people in the city, people in the county an opportunity to improve their lives, and note that I am the best person suited to lead this office. You can find my website at www.ericafordadotcom. Thank you.
Thank you both, Mrs. Williams and Mr. Hartwig, for your time, for being here this evening and talking with us, and to all of the voters in Houston County. Thank you. And we will move on now to Ms. Holmes and Mr. Boyer, who is the candidate for State Representative, District 147.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer, you have two minutes to give some final remarks and comments.
I want to thank everybody who's listening in on YouTube. I actually just got a text from my son, I didn't even know he knew that we had this, this forum going on right now, so he's been watching me on here. Hey, buddy. So for everybody in House District 147, you have a very clear choice to make this election. If you look at my work experience, my service, you will, it is very obvious, there's a stark difference between myself and my opponent. So please do your homework. I think if you want somebody who's a career politician, you want someone who talks for a living, you want somebody who doesn't show up for forums, who, who, who only wants to play to certain audiences, you know, check him out. But if you want somebody who has a history of showing up, even when it's tough, fighting, and standing for something real and practical, then I'm a choice. You can check out my website at stephenforgeorgia.com. It's P H, S D E P H E N for georgia.com. I'm not going to ask for donations, I'm not going to ask for any of that, but listen, just vote your conscience. Conscience, we're seeing right now what happens at all levels of government, whenever people let certain very important qualities lose priority in their choices. So vote decency up and down the ballot. That, that's a requirement. If you can't do that, just don't show up, because what's going to happen is, if all of the people who were four years ago voted a certain way, and we're seeing how that's playing out right now, if that happens again, you probably won't have a party in four years. So take, take the long view, which I know is tough sometimes, take the long view. If you can't bring yourself to vote for the right person this, this election, don't vote, take the loss in short term, regroup, and try again in four years. That way, at least maybe then, you'll still have a party. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyer. Again, we'd like to thank all of our candidates for coming on tonight, for sharing their vision, for sharing their platforms, and we'd like to thank everyone who tuned in as well. We hope this was insightful, we hope that you will have information so that you can make an informed decision when you go to the polls to vote. On behalf of the Warner Robbins Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, thank you again for your participation in our virtual Meet the Candidates Town Hall meeting.
And thank you again to my fellow moderators, Mr. Louis Lipowski and Ms. Shelley Holmes. It's been a pleasure spending this evening with both of you and to all of our candidates. Again, I just echo thanks for spending your time and sharing your vision. To all of you at home who have tuned in for now this almost hour and a half, we appreciate you. It is our sincere hope that you do go to the polls well-informed about who you're voting for, what you're voting for. I'll plug WMAZI again, our voter access team. If you continue to have other questions before you head to those polls, just Facebook us, you can email me, erodgers@13wmaz.com. I'm also on Facebook, Aaron Rodgers, I'm part of that voting access team, and it's my duty to make sure that you know what you're voting for. So I do appreciate it. Before we go, a few key dates so that you know what is coming up. So make sure you're registered, that's the first thing, because that deadline is Monday. If you are registered, check, make sure you are still on that roll. We have seen it happen, clerical errors, or some instances purging, so make sure, even if you think you registered, that you are still on their roll. You can vote by mail, you can vote in person. Early voting actually starts in just a couple of weeks, on October 12th, and it goes through October 30th. There is a Saturday early voting date, I believe that is October 24th, and of course, Election Day is November 3rd. Remember, your vote is your voice, so use it wisely and use it. Make sure you go to those polls. Thank you all again, thank you so much. And in case you didn't have enough politics, remember, the presidential debate is tonight. Again, gonna plug for 13WMAZI, you can watch it there. So make sure you tune into that, too. It is a little past my bedtime, so I'll be catching up on the recaps tomorrow morning, but I do hope that you all tune into that so that you can be even more well-informed before you head to the polls. I hope you all have a very good night and a terrific Tuesday.